Public hearing of the Champagne County Board Tuesday, September 23 at 6:31 PM. Roll call, please.
Kibler, Langenheim, Maxwell.
Here.
McGuire, Michaels, Mitchell.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry, Richards, Rosales.
Here.
Schrader, Schwartz, Alex, Burksen, Carter, Covert, Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Here.
James, Jay.
Here.
Kurtz.
Yeah.
Have a call. Thank you. Can I have the notice of the meeting, please? Sasha.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of County Board Champagne County, Illinois, will convene on September 23, 2014 at 6:30 PM in the Lyle Shields Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois for the purpose of receiving public comment on the FY 2015 budget.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, please. I got John and Lorraine, first and second. Any changes, discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Our next would be introductory comments, and that'll be Mr. Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're gonna give a minute here and see if we can get...
Give a minute here and see if we can get the monitors working.
No problem.
While we're waiting, just... There they go. Oh, we got it over here. That was just...
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. This is the first year that we've done this. This is sort of an extra step in the budget process from what we've done in past years. So, this is an experiment, and I appreciate everybody being here. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Petrie, who felt like we needed to explore having some additional public participation in the budget process, and we'll see how this goes, and hopefully we'll learn things from this that we can use in future years. Just to talk about what we're gonna do during the introduction here, this is as much a chance for us to get some information out about the budget as it is a chance for the public to contribute, so hopefully we'll be able to communicate some useful information in both directions tonight. I'm gonna touch on the fiscal year 2015 budget process. Deb will give a brief introduction to the budget for those of you in the audience or watching who may not be familiar with the process. I'll point you to some information online that may help as we move forward in the budget process. I'll talk about some of the key issues with the 2015 budget. Deb will address some decision points that she's identified, which will be the basis for her recommendation to the County Board, and then I'll just talk briefly about the public engagement here, and then we'll open the floor. Talk briefly about the 2015 budget process. This was... We had a budget resolution in May, which the County Board passed, which we do every year, which says how we're gonna progress as we decide on the budget. July 11, the departments submitted their draft budgets. July 14 through 30, the county administrator, Ms. Bucy, sat down with the department heads and the elected officials to work out, you know, details of their budget requests. August 21, the County Board received three large books containing the draft budget, and on the 25th, 26th, and 27th of August, we had public meetings in this room where the department heads came in and introduced their specific budgets over three nights. On September 9, the county administrator presented what she calls decision points, which are areas that she identified that the County Board has some flexibility in terms of where we go with the budget. That was at a committee of the whole meeting, also a public meeting. September 23 is today. We're having a public hearing. September 30, we will have a meeting from today in this room where the Committee of the Whole for Finance will discuss and finalize what our recommendations are to the county administrator, who will take those, work up a tentative budget, bring it back to us, and the October 23 County Board meeting, we will approve placing that budget on file for official review. I'm sorry, I missed a step. The 30th will be the... I'm having trouble reading that. The Committee of the Whole will provide direction to Deb. October 14, at the Committee of the Whole, she will come back to us. We will then make additional changes or recommendations to the full board. The full board on October 23 will place the tentative budget on file. Then, November 13, the Finance Committee meets again to approve the final budget, again a public meeting, and then finally, at the public meeting on November 20, the County Board will approve the budget. And then, of course, as happens every year, there are changes that are necessary in the budget throughout the year. There are things where we underspend, things where we have unexpected expenses, you know, revenues are higher or lower, so we do generally make a number of budget amendments as we go through the year. I'm gonna kick it over to you, Deb, if you wanna give a budget introduction?
Okay. So, this is an overview of the 2015 budget. Right now, the entire fiscal 2015 Champagne County budget is $123,365,387 in revenue and $125,169,727 in expenditure, which equates to a revenue-to-expenditure deficit of 1.8 million. The fiscal 2015 general corporate fund budget, which is included in the total Champagne County budget, is presented with $35.5 million in revenue and $35.8 million in expenditure at this time with a revenue-to-expenditure deficit of $254,654. This is a look at the total county budget. From what we project, we will receive in revenue in 2014 to 2015, and this is presented based on the funds, so the general corporate funds, special revenue funds, RPC funds. The total revenue is projected to increase by 3.2% or $3.83 million from actual 2014 projected to the fiscal 2015 budget. This is a look at total county revenue by source. As you can see, about 80% of the total county revenues come from four sources: property taxes, state shared revenues, which include sales taxes, state and federal grants, and fees and fines. Overall, total county budget expenditure from fiscal 2014 projected to 2015 actually represents a 1% decrease. This also is presented to you based on the funds. You will see that... And this is a 1.26 million decrease going to fiscal 2015. This is largely attributable to the 13-month budget in fiscal 2014. This is a look at overall expenditure by category, and as you can see, over 80% of the budget goes to personnel and services. And then, this is a look at the total county budget over a three-year snapshot from fiscal 2013: 12-month budget, fiscal 2014, 13-month budget, and then fiscal 2015 back to a 12-month budget. Also shows the ending projected fund balance. The true real number of 42.86 is from 13. The other two, 14 and 50, would be based on projections. This is a look at general corporate fund. I'm giving you 2013, 14, and 15 because of the anomaly has a greater impact. The 13 months for fiscal 2014 has a greater impact on the general corporate fund budget than the total county budget. So, as you look, this shows the basic revenues by source: property taxes, state shared revenues, inter-fund revenues, et cetera. So, the change in revenue from fiscal 2013 actual to the fiscal 2015 budget is a 3.6% increase, so that's 3.6 over two years. It's a $1.23 million increase over those two years, going from $34.33 million in revenue in 2013 to budgeted $35.56 million in 2015. And this just summarizes where the dollar changes are in the revenue. Property taxes over two years are increasing by 1.24 million or 13.5%. State shared revenue is the only one on this chart that is probably an anomaly because in fiscal 2013, because we changed the closing date of our fiscal year, there's actually 13 months of revenue in fiscal 2013 revenue. So, while it looks like it's down, it's really basically fairly flat, and that would be the sales and income taxes. Fees, up .52 million from 2013, but remember, we increased fees in 2014, a year ago, and we had anticipated, I believe, more than $750,000 in fee increases, and those have not been realized. Inter-fund revenue, which is transfers between funds, is down by .3 million, down 20.6%. Licenses and permits are down. Local shared revenue is up .04 million. Grants are down .15 million, and miscellaneous is up .3 million, for a total of 1.24 million increase over two years. And this is a look at the revenues that support the general corporate fund, and you can see there are primarily three here. General corporate fund is not so supported by grants as the county budget as a whole is. It is funded primarily through property taxes, state shared revenue, and fees. This is a similar look at general corporate's expenditure from 13 to 15. Over from the 2013 actual to the 15 budget, we have a 9.6% increase. That's a $3.14 million increase over a period of two years, going from a budget of $32.68 million to a budget of $35.82 million. And again, the categories, the largest category of increases in personnel, there's a, over two years, a $1.37 million increase or 5.86%. And the other large area is in services, where there's a $1.12 million increase, which is a 19% increase over that two-year period. This is a look at expenditures by category, and personnel is 69%, services are 19%. Clearly, that's where the majority of the general corporate fund budget is spent. This is a look at the decision points that have been provided to the County Board for the general corporate fund. So, the fiscal 2015 general corporate fund right now presents itself with a $254,564 deficit. Included in the budget is $532,610 for capital facilities projects, which is a status quo number with what was spent in fiscal year 2014 for those projects. There's a request for $800,000 to be spent on those types of projects in fiscal 2015, and that's a decision the Board will have to make. Similarly, the budget has been presented with fully funding, capital reserve for all other technology equipment for all the general corporate fund departments. The capital asset replacement fund has not been fully funded since 2009, so this intends, going back to budgeting reserves for items that will be replaced in future years. If the Board decides not to do that, that budget could change from $485,000 to $233,044. That is what is required to purchase the items that must be replaced in next year's budget in 2015. The next group of items are items that general corporate fund departments have requested be added to their budgets. There's the Veterans Assistance Commission, additional assistance for veterans, an additional deputy coroner, an IT disaster recovery system, an additional desktop support technician, and 2.5 additional positions for the physical plant. And then, in revenue, we have budget... In the budget, $307,490 from the nursing home to cover the $4 million debt service for the nursing home construction project, and the Nursing Home Board of Directors has submitted requests to the Finance Committee that that transfer be forgiven, which would result in a loss of that revenue in general corporate. Finally, we have in the contingent line at this point, $169,620. This is a list of the capital facilities projects for fiscal 2015, which were the basis for the request for the $800,000. And, I mean, you can see that it is replacing some very old systems that are definitely in need of being replaced. This is a similar look at the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. The beginning deficit right now is $218,319. Again, the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund makes contributions to the Capital Asset Replacement Fund for technology, for the court-related offices. That is presented as fully funded for items not only needed next year, but amortized future reserve for future years. That's at $185,531. If that were dropped back to only funding for what is needed to be replaced next year, that would decrease to $76,080. Additionally, included in the budget is $83,251 of previously unspent revenue for the 5% delinquency prevention grant funding programs, and that is up to the County Board whether or not they will leave that budgeted in fiscal 2015. $5,000 of that $83,251 at this point has been committed with the contract to the Youth Assessment Center, which goes through June 30 of 2015. And this is a list of all of the projects that are included in the Public Safety Sales Tax budget for fiscal 2015.
Thanks, Deb. I don't know if anyone has a chance of reading that.
Yeah.
I'm having no trouble reading it on the monitor, so I think we've got a paper copy of that. I'm just gonna touch on those, I think.
Yeah.
So, the current... What's proposed in the draft budget for fiscal year 2015 for public safety sales tax items: software maintenance for the courts' technology system, technology funding for criminal justice system offices, the 5% delinquency prevention grant funding, which is going to the Youth Assessment Center, debt service on the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, transfer to the general corporate fund corrections budget for the lieutenant dedicated to the classification system, for the new inmate classification system in the jail, health insurance contributions for same, final phase of the sheriff's operations plan, continued funding of the reentry program, the specialty courts coordinator position, which is the... We'll operate the drug court. Utilities cost... A portion of utilities costs for the public safety buildings, and then, of course, the land share of the public safety sales tax goes to debt service on the construction bonds for the courthouse and the juvenile detention center. Let me go back to my slide there. So, thanks for the introduction, Deb. I wanted to point people to some resources that are out there, all on the county's website. Under the Quick Links section of the county's website, you can see the 2014 budget, and in fact, any previous budget. Probably the most accessible part of the 2014 budget is the Budget in Brief, which is a 30-page document that flushes out a lot of the information that Deb just provided. The full budget is 664 pages, so I don't think anybody's probably gonna read that, but the Budget in Brief is a useful introduction. The Auditor also has started something new this year, the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is the Auditor's Interpretation of the Annual Audit. And because that's a year behind, that deals primarily with the 2013 budget, but it does include some information on percentages of revenue, percentages of expenditure, sort of how the overall budget works. And then, the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, which is the actual audit, is also available at the location under Departments, Auditor, Annual Financial Statements. The Auditor's Office on the website, Departments, Auditor, Monthly Reports. The Auditor does a monthly report, which is a balance sheet, expenditure statement, revenue statement for the county, and the Treasurer does a similar one, which shows fund balances and a list of outstanding county bond debt, and when that debt will be paid off, and that's listed on the Treasurer's portion of the county website. Under Departments, County Board Office, you can find meeting schedules and agenda packets for the Committee of the Whole, which is where finance issues are generally discussed before they're sent to the full board. And likewise, under the County Board Office section, you can find agenda packets for the full county board. There's also information, which unfortunately was posted quite recently, so it may not have been particularly useful for this hearing, but it will be useful for you as we move forward in the process. Under Information for the September 23 public hearing, we have the document that the county administrator just shared, listing her decision points, and we have copies, electronic copies of the material that were provided to the County Board members at the legislative budget hearings, which are essentially the budget books. There's a lot of material there. I suspect you may be interested in one subsection of it. It's reasonably accessible, but you're gonna have to wade through a bit of... Wade through some numbers to get to what you're looking for, but it is there. So, I just wanted to talk about some issues. Deb gave sort of a neutral introduction to how we got here. I just wanted to make a couple of observations about things that I am thinking about as we move into the 2015 budget process. As Deb mentioned, the fiscal year 2014 budget included a significant fee increase. We estimated that that would generate $750,000 in additional revenue, and therefore, we included about $750,000 in additional spending. About $500,000 of that went to facilities maintenance. The Board has allocated virtually nothing for facilities maintenance, going back to the financial crisis, so this was an effort to sort of start playing catch-up with some of the needs that we have with our buildings. And then, about $200,000 of that, in fact, a little more than $200,000 of that was budgeted for justice-related programs in the aftermath of the ILPP study that included taking over the funding of a lot of the drug court after the state grant for that expired, establishing a reentry program, which is currently operating and seeking federal funds to supplement our funds, creation of investigator position for the public defender's office, creation of that staff position I mentioned for inmate classification at the county jail, and then there was money in the budget for a pre-trial services program, which, of course, as everyone knows, was not ultimately implemented. The fiscal 2014 fee revenues are tracking significantly lower than projected. A couple of reasons for that, largely beyond the county's control. One is document recording fees are down, and we're not entirely sure why that is. The real estate market's been recovering to some extent, but the recording fees haven't been keeping up. One theory that I've heard is that is that we're seeing more, sort of larger, commercial projects, but not seeing a rebound in the volume of single-family home transactions, which means, you know, maybe the documents that are being recorded are more... Are related to bigger deals, but we're not collecting as many fees as we would in a healthy housing market. We were also seeing a decrease in court-related fees, and that's primarily a result of a decrease in traffic tickets being written by many agencies. Again, that appears to be... We looked into that a little bit, and that appears to be related to budget challenges in the state police and other agencies who just don't have as many, you know, don't have as many officers out there doing traffic enforcement. It's not necessarily something that we like to use to generate revenue, but again, you know, the county has a lot of different revenue sources, so we have to keep tabs on each of these, and it appears to be a trend that we're seeing, you know, softer revenues from these fees over the years, so that's something we're gonna be able to probably rely on less going forward. We were able to essentially maintain a status quo budget because we were able to retire some debt from the... We had early retirement incentive debt that we were carrying to finance an early retirement program. That expired, or that was paid off, and we were able to adjust our social security contributions, and so the county administrator was able to shift some of the tax levy from those tax lines to the general corporate tax line to offset the lack of fee revenues. Deb mentioned the 13-month fiscal year a couple of times. Everyone's probably familiar with that, but what we did in fiscal year 2014 was added a month at the end of the fiscal year. Our county fiscal year has historically been from December 1 to December 1, and we've shifted that to January 1 to January 1 to make the close-out process a little easier in terms of, you know, when we're expecting people to be available, and to help... A lot of our associate agencies are funded by state and federal grants, and so having the county's quarters align with the state and federal quarters, although they don't align with the federal year, state and federal year, is gonna be useful for them. I apologize, this is kinda small, but I just wanted to make the point that we do... The county itself does receive a lot of state and federal funding, you know, programs like Head Start, programs like the Energy Assistance Program, we have small business loan programs. You know, there are a lot of programs that are sort of under the auspices of the county, but that aren't part of the general corporate fund budget, and a lot of those are heavily funded by state and federal funding. Within general corporate, though, state and federal funding is something of a wild card. We've had some successes in the last year. We've been... The Facilities Committee has been... And the Facilities Director has been successful at getting some energy efficiency grants from the state to offset some of our facilities' needs. The Emergency Management Agency has gotten some grant money. We've gotten some reimbursement for disaster recovery costs in the aftermath of the Gifford, especially in the aftermath of the Gifford storm response. We... The county clerk has gotten grants for some election accessibility grants to fund voting machines, that type of thing, election technology. The Children's Advocacy Center is that which investigates child sexual abuse, is actually receiving money via the United Way, via the settlement that was mandated that Penn State University pay in the aftermath of the Jerry Sandusky case. So, you know, we have all these... It just goes to show, like, how many different sources of funding there are for these things. On the other hand, we... The drug court grant, which was essentially a seed money grant that lasted several years, but that's now expired, so the county is taking over the responsibility for paying for that coordinator proposing to do that. There are some structural issues with the state motor fuel tax that people may or may not be aware of that affect the Highway Department. Essentially, the motor fuel tax hasn't really gone up in a couple of decades, so as salt costs and fuel costs and personnel costs go up, the revenue for that doesn't, so that poses some challenges. We've seen some delays in the state's Medicaid approval process and intergovernmental transfer payments to the nursing home. We've got this Access Initiative Grant, which is administered by the Mental Health Board to deal with at-risk youth, and that's a federal grant, and that is beginning to sunset. We've got an application out right now through the reentry program for a Department of Justice grant for about $600,000, which, if that happens, will obviously be very useful in terms of that program's ability to make forward progress. And so, I guess, I just wanted to say, I think we need to continue to aggressively pursue these outside funding opportunities, but unfortunately, we can't really budget for them. So, that's the takeaway there. Bottom line, the fiscal year 2015 budget is pretty flat. You're probably aware that we operate under property tax caps in Champagne County, which means the amount by which property taxes are allowed to grow is essentially indexed to the Consumer Price Index. Likewise, increases in wages tend to be tied to the Consumer Price Index as well, so, you know, as the revenue goes up, the expenses go up. Healthcare... Things like healthcare costs, energy costs, and commodity costs tend to go up faster than the Consumer Price Index, so it's a challenge to continue to, you know, provide the same level of services. One example this year is the cost of road salt to the county's about doubled. You probably saw an article in the paper recently, and Champagne's having the same issue. Basically, everybody's having to pay a lot more for salt because of the rough winter we had last year. I don't see any significant opportunities for new revenues. I mean, we were able to, in theory, generate new fee revenue last year. That generated some revenue, but obviously didn't meet expectations, so at this point, our only... And the only way we can generate significant new revenues would be a tax increase, which would require taking a referendum to the voters. It's not something the county can... County Board can do on its own. So, I really don't see much in the way of revenues for new spending unless we can identify offsetting cuts. And so, as a result, you know, we didn't have very many decision points. Every year, Deb sits down and looks at things that she wants the County Board to weigh in on in terms of where we go with the budget, and last year, this process was a lot more interesting because we had, you know, significant additional revenue and significant decisions to make about how to program that. At this point, I would guess that most of the new funding requests are unlikely to be included in the budget. However, of course, we can reconsider that. However, of course, we can reconsider that during the year if, if we see revenues increasing higher than we, than we think they are going to be. One of the things that I appreciate about, about Champaign County and the Champaign County Board is we tend to budget conservatively, so most years, we actually come in under budget. So there may be some opportunities later in the year if we see that revenues begin to recover, but we don't know that. So just a couple of comments, and I'll wrap up, about public engagement, since this is a public hearing. All the steps of the budget process, beginning with the legislative budget hearings, are open to the public. They may not be of spectacular interest to the public, but they are, they are open. I recognize, and this is a real issue, that the size and the complexity of a budget for an organization as complicated as Champaign County Board is a challenge for board members, let alone for the, you know, the interested citizen. You know, we've been, some of the people on this board have been doing this for, for many years, and still, I don't think are familiar with the ins and outs of the budget. I know I'm, there are certainly, you know, questions about the budget where I have to go to the county administrator, go to department heads, and I know everybody has the same issue. So if you're, you know, a citizen who's interested in the budget and you do have specific concerns, we don't expect you to understand everything. I would certainly encourage you to feel free to contact county board members to ask for information on anything that you're, that you're concerned about. I basically said this last time, but, you know, flat revenue plus a flat mandate to provide services means limited flexibility in terms of decisions that we can make as a county board on the budget. Ms. Petrie has, has really advocated for the idea of participatory budgeting, and one of the things we did leading, or I did leading up to this hearing was, you know, sat down and tried to identify some of these sort of near-term, sub-tactical decisions that have been successful in participatory budgeting efforts elsewhere. And the participatory budgeting, and Ms. Petrie knows a lot more about this than I do, but it seems to work very well in situations where you have funds available that you have determined sort of generally how to program, but lack specific guidance and want specific guidance from the public as far as how to do that. I didn't find very many of those in the county budget, perhaps I'm not being creative enough. But any comments, ideas, suggestions on the budget or on the budget process, things we should be spending money on that we aren't, things that we are spending money on that we shouldn't, creative ideas for, for generating revenue or for improving the budget process would certainly be appreciated. So with that, everybody's tired of hearing me talk, so I'll hand it over to Mr. Kurtz here for a public comment.
Well, I do want to say that the work that Deb and Chris and our staff has done, when you look at a, a budget that's over 680 pages long, the hours of time that are put into this, along with the rest of the board, who have stacks of books to go through and read, I have to agree with Chris, sometimes it's overwhelming. But I think we, we get through it and we come out pretty good at the end because of the transparency we have with the public and, and the discussions we have on both sides of the aisle. So we only have a very few public comments right now. We'll, of course, stay at this point with the five-minute rule. If later on, we need to change that, we'll open it up anyway. So let's start with Steve Steerwald. Please step up.
Where do you want me at?
What's that? Yeah, right here, please. And then just hit the button in the center of the microphone.
Thank you. I'm Eric Suits, and I'm here with Steve Steerwald as chairman of the Champaign County Soil and Water Conservation District, and I serve as treasurer on that organization. Don't know if our presentation is merited to a great degree. Certainly want to appreciate the opportunity to be here and, and at least say a thank you to the counting board for the support that you provide us within the Conservation District. I think the, the contribution that you make to us helps us solidify funding to, to fund our operations through the year. Yours is a very solid influx of, of operating funds that allow us to continue even when some of our, our state appropriation is a little less than consistent on, on its arrival. So we certainly appreciate that. We try and be very responsible with the funds that you do provide. I sort of try and epitomize it as the factor of 10. If, if you guys provide us the amount of funding that you do, we feel like through the, the implementation of conservation structures and incentive programs that we're able to offer to the constituents around the county that benefit not only our, our agricultural residents and their operations, but our, our urban perspective residents in some of the, the programs that we have in place. We think it's an efficient use of the county resources and, and that we bring that money in that is spent with contractors, spent here locally to where the county does get a benefit back from the contribution that you make to us. I guess in the spirit of this participatory budgeting process that Patsy supports, I would simply ask if there are any questions of us. I mean, I'm taking it more as an opportunity to say thank you and also open it up that if you, from a board perspective, have any questions about our operations that we could address. I have packed extra packets of our summary of operations and our, our fiscal records over the last five years, along with our 2014 income statement, but we share all that with Deb when we sit down with her in August as county administrator, so that probably is being slightly redundant, but would certainly be in a position to field any questions if anybody could have.
Eric, I'll tell you what we're going to do. Since we only have very few people, what I'd like to do is have each of them make their first statement, get to the discussion if we suspend the rules, we can then ask questions of you, if that's okay. I want to give each person an equal chance to start the discussion, okay?
You want to turn the mic back off?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
The last time I was here, the last time I was here, which was just not very long ago, I talked about my, my views on militarization and programs. So obviously, when you're talking about programs, I think this is the place to be. I want to thank Patsy. This is, wherever I think citizens can participate and there can be dialogue, that's great. Chris, you gave a great presentation. I don't have a clue. I'm just trying to pay my power bill, okay? But, you know, I, I was able, just for that little amount, to see some things going on. So the reason I'm here is, again, I'm worried about militarization. I think everyone should be worried about militarization because it's happening around the country, and the lights need to go on now with Ferguson. You know, it's no joke. It's in the news, and it's not stopping. And a lot of different groups of people that were apathetic before that now are no longer apathetic. So I think that it's very, very important that we really look at that as a real thing that is, is relevant to our county. And one of the, one of the things in the budget, and people have said, there's nothing we could do about the MRAP being, you know, we didn't have anything to do with it, and there's nothing we can do with it. However, there has been a buildup. This wasn't the first military vehicle or military thing that came. You know, there's also been an armed car a few years ago that the SWAT rides around in, there's a drone, there's, and the drone, and I'm not saying the sheriff did anything wrong. From my understanding, the drone was also in his preview to get that, but I think that it would be a good idea if, you know, the salt wasn't funny, so I don't think militarization is funny either. I'd like to have the same respect as the salt man, okay? So I think that, I, I think that if we could have some kind of accountability, if the board could put somehow in the budget at least a knowing or accountability of what's going on there. And the other thing, I wouldn't like to see any of the budget used for the MRAP, which is real controversial right now. A lot of people are talking about it across the lines. You know, it's, you know, Democrats, Republicans, a lot of people are talking about what that means. I think the other, for me, important thing is that, I don't think 200K, when you look at 500K for maintenance fees, 200K is not much for programs. And we've got a lot of problems in our community. It's only going to get worse because the economy is, you know, maybe housing's getting a little better, but the economy, those people aren't back to work. And as you see the economy dwindle, we all know, and those that are older even, you know, may remember times. I'm not saying that you're as old as the Great Depression, but, you know, maybe somebody told you. I think that one of the things that may be important to put into place is, and it was talked about before, is the racial justice task force. This put into place would show that the county board and people around the county board are at least care about the, and understand there's racial disparity. And that put into place could very easily stop a situation like Ferguson, or if a situation like Ferguson would develop here or anything similar, then, you know, that would be put into place. I, I would like you to really consider, it's not an expensive thing. I mean, you, you've got a place to meet, you know, people, many people is willing to give time and research and whatever. You've got a lot of students over there. And one of the reasons why I keep talking about Ferguson here is that this is fertile ground. It doesn't have the same economy as Ferguson. What you do have here is that you have a student population, and you have more radicals than most places. So very easily, we could slip into a situation that wouldn't be good for any of us. So I would like you to consider that racial justice task force and also accountability on any military vehicles, arm, you know, okay, I was just gonna, okay. Yeah, I don't have much more to say.
Hi, my name is Cole Perry, and I live at 703 West Oregon Street in Urbana. I'd like to thank the board for its time tonight, and the committee for working on this budget. I'm speaking as a doctoral candidate in the Department of Human and Community Development at the university, and I'm, and I'm glad to have this opportunity to express these thoughts tonight about the county's funding priorities and how they impact our community. So I'll be commenting on the topic of the criminal justice system as well, similar. And so I, I have found the board's commitment to engagement with and response to the public regarding criminal justice to be, on the whole, encouraging. The decision to not move forward with building new jail facilities and instead devoting the money for a data-driven assessment from the ILPP, I think was great and showed prudence and consideration for the long term. I think the, those funds for social programs meant to decrease the jail population and generally improve the conditions that lead to incarceration indicate our orientation towards best practices in criminal justice. I especially appreciate how these decisions are made through dialogue with key stakeholders in the community, and I think it's clear that the elected officials here make time to hear and evaluate input from the constituency, which is great. I, I think last spring's RFQ for a justice facility center that incorporated the needs of people with mental illness, I think it represents, in, for what I understand, a step in this democratic process, but not one that necessarily heads in the direction of best practices in terms of criminal justice. The sheriff's department is qualified to do many things, but providing primary mental health care is not one of them. Rather than investing in new jail facilities without the ability to address the root problem, continued investment in rehabilitative alternatives that don't include expensive incarceration, I think demonstrates a prudent, long-term perspective. And the, the ILPP report sort of echoed that when they concluded, "The incarceration of low-risk, high-needs offenders reflects a neglect of alternatives that would actually result in very large net savings." So I believe this shift to focusing on reintegrating individuals and assisting them to become productive members of the community, itself a long-term strategy, is at odds with expanded incarceration or punitive approach to justice. Punishing low-level offenders with imprisonment and administering jail time as mental health care don't really accord with a view that seeks to produce lasting change through meeting the diverse needs of our community. So as the board considers a new budget, I urge you to be critical about what our expenditure allotments say about the justice priorities of our county, because I don't believe the county needs any more jail cells. Rather, I ask that you, as our representatives, protect our most vulnerable populations from a future where going to jail is a prerequisite for getting access to mental health care, drug treatment, drug treatment, or other social programs known to prevent criminal offending.
Hi, I'm Mark Enslin. I live at 207 West Indiana in Urbana, and I just have a couple of brief things to say. I wanted to thank you for the openness of this process. I think it's a welcome thing and should be increased if possible. I'm sorry, I didn't really get a chance to study much before coming here. There are some themes that I have spoken to you about before that I, I think are worth continuing to consider, that you did allocate for pretrial services, and I've argued before you that this is something that's really valuable for, according with the, the suggestions from the ILPP, and I don't know if there's a way for you to actually make good on that, but you might also consider, if you're going to consider alternatives, those which are in the spirit of the pretrial, which are social programs that are aimed towards keeping people out of jail in the first place. There are a lot of factors that play into that. I wanted to echo a little bit what Patsy Howell said about racial justice task force. If I remember correctly, the justice task force that recommended it, recommended something on the order of $10,000 for such a thing, and in the numbers that I was seeing, that doesn't seem to be a huge amount for the potential benefit, so I think that would be good to, to bring forward in your considerations. And in general, the area of the public safety tax, I think, is an area where participatory budgeting makes a lot of sense because public safety is something that many of us have opinions about, and it's not something that's very clear exactly what constitutes public safety. And so I think dialogue along those lines could be beneficial and, and would accord with the other things I was saying. And then just something that occurred to me while looking at the presentation regarding the nursing home, when there was a line there about Medicare not being, sort of delayed or not being adequately met, and considering that that was an external impinging on the budget, I would think that that, that might weigh towards not, I don't know if it's waiving the, the debt of the nursing home, but not, not punishing the nursing home in a budgetary way because it, along with these other components of life where it's difficult, people on Medicare need that service, and so that's, I don't know if I, clear, but I think that that could be taken into consideration for that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We don't have any other person. Has anyone else wants to speak at this time to the Board? Okay. Next is discussion of the budget, and if we want to ask any questions, we can suspend the rules. If we want to bring any of the public in on our discussions. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak up?
Move to suspend the rules to allow...
I'm sorry, what?
Move to suspend the rules to allow questioning the audience, please.
I have a second to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. All right, so who wants to speak to this issue on the Board at this point?
I'm going to ask for a couple-minute recess here, so I can talk to the county administrator about some of these issues that have been raised.
Sure.
See if we want to have any further discussion.
Five minutes, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll take a five-minute recess, and be back at 7:30. From the Board, is there anyone else wants to speak to a specific budget issue? That's what we're here tonight to do. If you can, if you want to pinpoint a specific budget issue, that would be fine. If there's a general statement that you want to make, we've already had, I'd rather not be redundant if we could. If you have anything new that you have to say, please do. If you have something in a short way that you want to add, that's fine as well. I want to give you the time you need, but... Do I have any volunteers?
Anybody want to, anybody from the Board want to have any discussion?
So, in other words, we've got everything straight, everything is perfect, we've got everything we want on the budget, so we don't really have to do anything except to prove it. You want to do that tonight? No, just kidding.
We'll be back, we'll be back next week for the same type of discussion, only then I'll be bringing a recommendation, which I don't think will be very surprising to anybody, but it'll be a starting point.
Deb, you want to, what do you want to talk about?
I'm not going to talk about that now.
All right, since I do have a hand, Patsy. Okay. I was waiting, Patsy.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just sort of sitting on pins and needles, figuring, we're going to get through this without a comment from Patsy.
Yeah, I know.
I am really concerned something is wrong tonight.
I know.
Patsy, you have the floor.
I was here to listen to the public, but I have one question that I heard, actually, Mr. James, so I'm sort of taking up his question, and that had to do with the list of items that are being covered by the Public Safety Sales Tax, and it's number five that he brought to the fore. And if, in our budgetary discussion, if we might have some further conversation of that now being housed under the Sheriff's Budget. Or if not the whole amount the first year, you know, giving a little time to slide it over there, maybe 50% this year and 50%, then the whole thing the next year.
I mean, the Sheriff's Budget is General Corp., so you can move it from Public Safety to General Corp. and backwards? I don't really see how that's going to get us anywhere. The Sheriff doesn't have his own revenue funds that's funded anything, he gets funded by General Corp. So, what, I mean, we can call it whatever, Public Safety or General Corp., it's still the same thing.
Josh.
Yeah, I tend to agree for the fact that it is robbing peer to pay, Paul, but the point could be that the Sheriff could find the savings within his budget, within one of his other various line items. I did notice that the food expenditure is equivalent to the food expenditure at the nursing home, which includes management expenses. And I'm hoping we're paying our residents at the nursing home, you know, at least we're feeding them as well as we do our prisoners, so.
Jim.
There's been a lot of discussion about, what was the term, preentry, no, preentry before court, or?
Pretrial.
Pretrial. I think that's what this lieutenant does, is actually, he classifies people as they come into the jail to determine whether they're going to court. So, part of this is, has more to do with the court than it does with his responsibility in the jail. So, assigning this cost to the Sheriff may not actually be appropriate, because it has more to do with trying to keep people either in jail or out of jail, and it has more to do with the court system than it does the jail, or I would think it would.
Chris.
Yeah, if I can, if I can clarify that a little bit, it's not as much of a pretrial decision as it is deciding what to do with inmates once they're in the jail, but this was something that was recommended by the ILPP study to basically, rather than treating all prisoners as maximum security, to identify, you know, classes of prisoners, classes of security that were necessary for specific prisoners. And what they're doing at this point is, I know they're using the downtown jail in part as a lower security facility for prisoners that can be held in less heavily-supervised conditions. Beyond that, as far as the details of what that person does on a day-to-day basis, you'd have to ask the Sheriff, but it is something that we included last year as a specific recommendation of the ILPP report. One of the concerns that Dr. Kalmanoff raised was that it's essentially wasteful, you know, a lot of your prisoners don't need to be held under maximum-security conditions, and so, it's cheaper to, you know, allow them to be in a less restrictive environment. Unfortunately, you know, our building doesn't accommodate that very well right now. I mean, the downtown jail was built as a maximum-security facility, so the lesser-security inmates there are still in a maximum-security facility, they just have some more privileges and some more, you know, freedom to move around within the facility. I would hope going forward, and this is one of the things that the Sheriff's Office Operations Plan is supposed to look at, is opportunities for lower intensity incarceration, things like work release and so forth. We're doing the, Sheriff's doing electronic home detention with the ankle bracelets, but I think there's more that could be done there. But we need to be able to have the system in place to sort of objectively classify prisoners in order to take advantage of those things when we have the facilities for them.
John.
Well, I'm not sure, but I thought that originally the public, I'm probably one of the reasons this got brought up, because Deb had to straighten me out on this issue, too. It's money that we owe, and this is the only place for it to come from right now, and we started it, and we're obligated to do it. But when we started the public safety tax, we all thought it was going to sunset, and instead of sunsetting it, we just keep adding different things to it. So, it's a necessary source of revenue that we don't have any choice. We've got to do it because it's the only choice of revenue we've got, and I don't expect it to ever be sunsetted.
Patsy, did you, okay, let's, yeah, I didn't see Gary. Gary, go ahead. And Stan.
I would like to talk about the position that we're looking at that requires basically a lieutenant-level position. This is a position of great responsibility, and we want to be sure we've got a person that has the ability to make these decisions on whether or not folks are going to be declassified and maybe even released before they go into the jail. So, I'm very supportive that we have a very responsible person that has a great deal of knowledge about the incarceration process. Thank you.
Wow, I thought we were about to get out of here. All I wanted to say was, I wanted to thank Chris, I thought he did a nice job presenting a rough overview of everything. Basically, he showed the pluses and minuses of what we're trying to do, and the budget sites, guys, so it, we have to squeeze what we can where we can. So, just want to thank Chris and Deb.
Thanks, Stan, and I contacted Deb several hours ago, asking for some, for her to put her presentation together, so I appreciate her putting a lot together on short notice. I know she talks about the budget all the time, so I knew she probably already had this more or less ready to go, but I did kind of surprise her this afternoon, so as always, I appreciate Deb's patience.
Patsy, you had something?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to ask about the pretrial part, because my understanding was, when we were talking about the pre-trials, I forget the whole name, but the pretrial thing, was that it was, that there was going to be an effort to try to eliminate people from taking up the beds in the jail. That would eliminate a lot of the costs, you know, that you're talking about, food, maintenance, a lot of different things. And so, that was when I thought that the pretrial thing was brought up, and I thought it was before people went into the jail, and that decisions like ankle bracelets and work release and various things that would kind of eliminate the population.
We can respond to that, Patsy.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do the best I can, and somebody jump on me if I'm saying, if I'm misremembering the history here, but the ILPP report recommended a, I would say, a formal pretrial services or pretrial release program, and the idea was that when someone was arraigned, there would be staff who were responsible for researching that person's case, making a formal recommendation to the judge as far as whether that person, you know, what the conditions of that person's bond should be, whether that person was a risk to the community, whether they were likely to show up for trial or not, you know, things that would enter into a decision about where they would go while they were awaiting trial. And there are programs like this in other jurisdictions. They have, in some cases, significantly reduced the number of people who are going into the jail. The county board budgeted money for that, for such a program, and I think was going to be two positions that we put in the budget last year that was going to be funded by Public Safety Sales Tax. The judiciary, and the state's attorney, and the courts administrator, and the public defender, sort of all agreed, came to the conclusion that, in this particular county, based on what they were already doing, as far as researching cases prior to trial, as far as having a prosecutor making recommendations at the time of arraignment to the judge and so forth, basically came to the conclusion that much of what ILPP recommended be done in a pretrial services program formally was being done informally already, and didn't believe that it would achieve enough benefit to be worth the money. Now, this is a source of considerable disagreement. I mean, some people agree with them, some people don't. But the reason ultimately that the program, the county board, you know, funded the positions, the folks in the courthouse, basically the chief judge, decided that they didn't want to implement the program, so they didn't implement the program. So, I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can go much more into detail than that without getting outside my area of knowledge, but essentially, ILPP said they thought we needed a formal pretrial services program. The folks at the courthouse and the public defender and state's attorney said, "We don't think we need one, because we're already doing a lot of this through other means," and so, we funded it, but they didn't want to do it.
What happened to the money?
It was never budgeted.
Okay.
Well, no, 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 no.
I mean, it was budgeted, but...
It was budgeted, but it was basically underspent. I mean, one of the, one of the, a little bit of it, at the time that we did, basically throughout the year, that money that had not yet been spent on that program got spent on other stuff. The money was held, I mean, we have held the budget line open such that if it were to happen, we would have enough money to get through the rest of the year, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen. So, I don't know, I would...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak to that issue.
No, yeah, I...
Just, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and it's not...
Because it sounded like these were two different things.
They are, they are. This, this...
And so, I just wanted to, that clarified that it was two different things.
Two different things, yeah. The inmate classification thing is another thing that was recommended by ILPP, but that happens in the jail with the Sheriff's personnel. This would have...
Because I know people were real conservative.
Yeah, this program would have happened in the courthouse, and that program didn't happen, and it's not in the budget for the upcoming year, because we don't think they're going to do it, so there's no point putting it in the budget. But that's, that's my understanding.
Then that leaves money for that racial, whatever, racial justice.
Take that, take that under advisement.
Aaron.
Yeah, I guess I was just going to say, part of my understanding, maybe in part why that they didn't fully implement it, we have arraignment court 364 days a year, so those people that do get into the system, the next day they're seeing a judge to decide whether or not they can be put on, go to bond, or they need to be retained in the system because of whatever reason, there's a warrant somewhere else or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, there was definitely the case that some of the things that we were doing, sort of, were, people have come in and looked at this, you know, some are definitely kind of surprised by, you know, wow, yes, you're doing, you're doing some good things. Some of those experts still say we ought to do a formal pretrial services program, but it is true that the, my feeling is that the counties in which they've had the huge reduction in population as a result of pretrial services programs were the ones that weren't doing anything. Right? So, we're better than that, you know, we don't have guys waiting in jail for two weeks to get arraigned, which is good. So, it means that probably a pretrial services program would have less of a reduction in the jail population here as it has somewhere else, because a lot of the guys who it would keep out of jail are already out of jail, which is why the jail population's gone down by 40% or whatever in the last 10 years. So, I mean, we're, they're making progress, they're moving in the right direction. Now, whether, whether the program would generate enough of a reduction in inmates to save the money to pay for itself, or whether for, you know, basic principles of justice, we ought to do it anyway, is an open question. But yeah, you're certainly right, there are aspects of Champaign County that already resolve, I mean, we do have a lower, we do have a lower per capita incarceration rate than a whole lot of other counties.
And there was also a tracking done by the court system on that. We took a look at how, as we said, the pretrial and on the, on the system, and it showed very few that would necessarily be, from their tracking, how they did it, and so, it never got off the ground, actually. Patsy, you, is there anyone else who hasn't had their first shot? All right, Patsy.
Thank you very much. I echo Stan's compliment to both Ms. Bucie and Chris Alex. Thank you for doing this, and I hope Ms. Bucie's slides will be up on our website, because they're very educational, they're great help. I wanted to share a few thoughts that came out of the Democratic Caucus' conversation. Everybody was invited to that, and Mr. Maxwell joined us, and Ms. Bucie joined us, and there are two things that we haven't talked about this evening. One is the $100,000 that we have in the budget for the Community Elements Program. It was not a question whether we wanted to support that program, it was more a question, do we put that sort of in reserve pending the outcome of the decision on the grant? Because that is a very generous grant that might come to Community Elements to do the reentry program. And the other is, even though Mr. Alex indicates the tightness of the budget, and we've had a number of additional requests for staff, we did talk about whether some of the departments that were requesting these additional staff members might find some means within their own budgets to help offset the cost of those staff members, and if they do, it would be nice if they had a chance to come forward and let us know about it, even if we couldn't implement it this year, that would be a move forward for future consideration. Thanks.
Yeah, I guess I have a question for you, Patsy. My assumption is that the $100,000 that we're putting into reentry is a core amount, and that even if we get the grant, most of those grants expect local matching money, so you said, "Put it on reserve," you need to explain what you meant by that, because I don't think that's an option, even if the grant comes through.
You may be accurate. I did not remember a matching grant aspect, maybe Ms. Bucie can clarify that for us, because I know she is more acquainted with the actual details of the grant, but I didn't remember hearing that. But if that's the case, then you are absolutely correct.
I, there's actually, I mean, as someone who's on the reentry committee, I mean, they have a caseworker that's working, and they've been using the money to pay them. We're traveling tomorrow to Rockford to study the program. There's a lot of things that they're using the money for, so you can't just take the money out of the program right now. Six million, it's 600,000.
It's 600,000, and I do believe that there is some match requirement, even though it may be in kind, it's coming from what we're paying for that they're already doing.
Yeah, we're, yeah, they've been working for months.
John, you weren't just stretching there, were you?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
But I'll be very quick. I think we all need to remember that the sheriff don't have a lot of discretion when somebody's hauled to his door. He can't stand at the door and say, "I'll take you, but I won't take you," or "I'll take you." There's a process that has to happen, and it isn't immediate. So there's going to have to be a place to put those people. And I think the, depending on what it might be, if it's Gary coming in drunk, would be pretty easy to handle, but if somebody, if somebody like me come in that's about half insane, and I need professional services, they can't just click their fingers and have that at their fingertips. So we're going to need jails to some degree, irregardless of how big and how many, I don't know, but I think we need to keep that in mind, that they can't control what comes to their door. That's, that comes from a lot of different entities.
Yeah, a couple of people have asked me, you know, what the county board's role in the justice system is, and I've explained to them that somebody out there decides whether or not to commit a crime, a police officer decides whether or not to arrest them, they get taken to the courthouse, where a state's attorney decides whether or not to charge them, and a judge decides whether or not to sentence them, and then we're supposed to pay for the building. That's basically our role in the justice process. So I'm glad that we've been able to enter all these other areas, and I think it's good that we're sort of in self-defense, out there paying for programs that'll reduce the number of people we have to build a building for, or maintain a building for. But yeah, I absolutely endorse Mr. Jay's remarks.
Jim?
No, I didn't realize I was going to make a comment about that, but I think we do have some more responsibility in what they're doing, because the police departments, the chiefs, and the sheriff, and the courts are really working on all these programs all the time, and trying to manage the number of people that are either in the Youth Assessment Center, in the Juvenile Delinquency Center, if that's the right word, JDC. And they really need help, because if it's someone, if a 14-year-old has a problem at 2:00 in the morning, they need a place to take them, and the Youth Assessment Center isn't open, but they need, they still have to have something to do with them, and they don't have a place to put them, you know? If, if they have someone who has a mental issue, and they take them to a hospital, you know, this question's come up many times, that they take them to the hospital and they aren't, they don't have a big enough issue that the hospital will take them, they can't force them to go to jail, they can't put them in jail. A judge has to determine they have to go to jail. There is no place to put them. You know, these are open questions, and, because the police can't determine that, a judge has to determine that. Of course, they're not going to court. So all these things are still open questions for us to determine, or someone to determine what to do with them. And of course, we don't have the funds to do that.
I was just going to add to what Jim said. I mean, that reminds me, I was, just during the recess, I was talking to Ms. Bucie about the racial disparity study, you know, issue, because this keeps coming up. And I think we should make the point that these type of problems that we're dealing with here, you know, crime and juvenile delinquency and at-risk kids and so forth, are community-wide problems. And so I think the solutions to these almost always are one, are appropriate solutions to these are almost always ones in which all of the local governments participate. So on things like the reentry program, you know, we're sort of out there in front on that program. But with things like the Youth Assessment Center, and things like the Champaign Coalition, that's the correct name, right? I keep getting all these different organizations mixed up, the Champaign Coalition and so forth. I think these are sort of these joint venture efforts by, where we're getting money from various governments, we're getting money from the different cities, the county's putting some money in, whatever. I think that's where this works best, because, not only because the county doesn't have enough money to fund these programs on its own, but because if you don't have all these agencies putting money in, then these agencies don't have skin in the game. So I think we want to make sure that people are invested in these programs, and so it's, I think, to our benefit, whenever we can, not to try to go it alone on these, but to go out there and try to, you know, round, drum up support from the other cities and other agencies, because obviously, A, they have money, and B, if they're putting money in, they're going to care a lot more about the outcome of these programs, I think.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home. Don't forget the finance cow, that's the next one, coming up next week.